Tyler, once again, we come before you in the most ominous way we know. First of all, thank you for your grace and for your mercy. We thank you for how you looked over us all night long, helped us stay from all harm, seen and unseen. And on tonight, Lord, we ask you, being our midst in this meeting on tonight, we ask that you help us to be humble and to agree and disagree in unity. For we know that there is unity. And we ask tonight that you also have mercy upon Commissioner Banks and his family, for the loss of his loved ones. We ask that you give them peace during their times of remit. And Lord, we ask that you continually give us guidance, understanding, and notice to do that will. All these blessings we do ask in the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to all who serve us, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. Thank you. So with that, this is your new goal. Thank you for being here this evening and for your going to, I guess, start us off.
I will start us off. All right. I want to thank everyone for being here. The purpose of our meeting, we're going to ask for a request of the City Commission to approve the proposed terms of a contract for the purpose of acquiring the middle middle school. That's where we're headed. We're going to ask you, we're going to talk about the contract, and we're going to ask you to approve what we have so far. It's not complete. We'll talk about that as we go along. As a means of introduction, I want to say, well, first, can everyone hear me through this mic? There you go. If they can't hear me, that's not good. All right. The Blue Ribbon Committee is keenly sensitive to the fact that the city has limited funds. We understand your discretionary funds are really nil to none. This is central to our meeting as we have moved forward. You'll see in your guiding economic principles graph on page four of your executive briefing that stated. We've seen the acquisition of the Miller Middle School property coming to the city at little or no cost. The school board giving the property to the city. The superintendent of schools and the provings have shown support. They would like to see the city have the property. They would say they want the city to be in possession of the property. We believe that there is otherwise little general agreement on the prospect of the contract terms. We will ask for your approval for those contract terms this evening and will ask you to appoint. All right, beginning tonight, the school administration has asked for a concession from the city. So with that in mind, we will ask you to approve Michael Brillhart, our interim city manager, to accompany Charlie Douglas and Marcel to finalize the negotiations and then come back to you for a final approval. We are confident that you will approve the commercial contract terms we're proposing tonight and that you will find it the easiest decision of great consequences that you have ever made. Okay. The objective is for the city to acquire the property with little or no cost. In support of this, see section 3.3 of the Interlocal Agreement that states that the Putnam County School District and the city shall coordinate conversion of school sites to other uses, including public use. All right, that's basically my introduction. The first thing I'd like to say is I want to commend the City Commission for creating a committee to look into the acquisition of the Miller Middle School property for use within the city and ultimately in the Brooklyn Peninsula. The Blue Ribbon Committee charter space that was tasked by the City Commission to assist the City Commission in obtaining information and ideas that support the acquiring of the property. Stay with me a moment as I turn the page. Of the Historic School for Public Use. This group was arranged about six months ago and was named the Blue Ribbon Committee. It consists of a wide variety of people with various skills to help this project happen. This is an example of how small government should work. Some of the skills are not found, some of the skills that are found are not on the City Commission necessarily. This is the way it should work, and we thank you again. Now, this is a picture of the Blue Ribbon Committee, but Dan Dodge was out with the flu that day, so he's up in this corner, and he is the chairman. He's a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Are you here with his vendor? Kevin Jordan, Nancy Taylor, Ronnie West, and our liaison between the Commission and the Blue Ribbon Committee is Commissioner Laurie. Okay, the committee has met many times. I'm going to say it twenty times. We have met in the sunshine that has slowed down the process, but we understand the need of the sunshine law. This is how citizen involvement works in small towns. The committee, largely at the effort of Commissioner Laurie, has presented you with a review booklet. And some of you have it before you. It is a report of the Blue Ribbon Committee's work thus far. The executive briefing, which is in the very first, is specifically for you. It summarizes our work today. I know you've had a chance to go through that, and much of what I'm going to tell you tonight is in that booklet. I can't thank Commissioner Laurie enough for his efforts. Now, let's get started. All right, we have a picture of the school as it stands today. I think we'll also have a rendition in the moment of an elevation that the architect, R.E.G., is envisioning. The school was closed at the end of 2021 year. The city's strategic plan calls for the acquisition of that property. The city's master plan calls for relocation of City Hall to the property. This is wholly consistent with the historic Crescent City life between the legs theme of Crescent City and the redevelopment efforts of the city. It also is in the city's best financial interest as well. And you see those details in your blue book. The school district administration has given positive signs of transferring the property to the city at no cost. Or little cost, I should say. As I conclude these remarks, we are confident that you will reach the same conclusion as the Blue Ribbon Committee. Not only is there no practical alternative to the school board becoming another to the school, it could become another Central Academy, but also acquisition of this school is in the best financial interest of the city and its taxpayers. The alternative to this is just sit there and deteriorate. And this is what could happen. This is what would happen to the Central Academy in Galactica. And this is what we don't want to happen. All right, here are some facts. Fact number one, the school board had an appraisal done in 2023, which included that the property was worth $4.3 million, primarily based on sales of charter schools in Orlando, Duval, and Pinellas Counties. Those markets are very different from Putnam County, and there is no such buyer here. Number two, commercial real estate in Putnam County offers little or no prospect for this type sale in the foreseeable future. All right, this is a, this is the MAI appraisal. And, all right, the Blue Ribbon Committee, with the help of Barbara Scholl, a local known Realtor, acquired and appraised a review. The review was based on the true market value of properties geared out of county and similar properties in rural settings. The appraisal review concluded that the value was $707,000 with $350,000 of the value lies in the south parcel previously offered for sale by the school board. When you consider the facts, these values mean little to nothing. Since clear marketable title cannot be conveyed to potential buyers. Now, I'm going to ask Commissioner Laurie to go through a, there we are. We're going to go through the parcels, and we're going to explain why they're not really marketable. Commissioner Laurie, will you help us here?
Certainly. Thank you, John. As was shown on the slide before this, the City Commission approved $3,000 to engage a title to do an opinion, excuse me, opinion of title report, which they researched all the way back to 1908. So some of this property started out as early as actually 1903 to be purchased and re-alleged into what you see before you, which is the current property that the school sits on today. And you'll see there, all those red lines are all pieces of land that were either city right-of-way that were given up or discontinued, or pieces of property that were gifted for a little bit of money to the school district. Several of them from the city, also one from the Harris family that was a local family here. You also see that purple line, which is Cypress Avenue. That was a planted right-of-way that the City Commission vacated, but also had in there a reverter clause that said that if this property ever ceases to be used at the school, it returns to the city with all improvements on it. And that was in 1964. So that purple line is actually, it runs right between right in front of the, right north of the gymnasium and the auditorium. So that's a problem there. Then you also see those orange lines, which are what would have been Berle Avenue and South Park Street. And those were vacated, actually they were discontinued. They were never vacated, which just means that the City Commission closed them. And that was all done in, I think, 19, how did I say, 1950? The blue lines are pieces of property that the school board did buy. So there's the one part that's on the north side of block four. That is where the auditorium and the gym and half building one, which is the main building sits. Those were purchased by the school district. And then there's that light blue line, which I would love to know what happened to that. That is the backside of the school right now, where the parking lot and everything that goes to the media center and the cafeteria is. Gullett could not find any records of it. I could not find any records of it. We looked through the city archives. It was abandoned, and it was supposed to be closed in 1908 from what we know, but no one can seem to find records of it. So there's, I have no idea. But the school is built on it, though. So all of those things kind of make it difficult to get the marketable title. And so a commercial real estate or any other developer wouldn't be able to come in here and really purchase that without clearing up all of these questions. And most of those questions come back to the city, because the city was the one that gifted some of those lands and put some of those, you know, clauses on it. So that's pretty much, I mean, you can see it's a conglomeration of pieces of property that over 122 years that was put together to make this school. It makes it very difficult, and it was quite a pile of, that's half of this report. Here's the deeds, trying to figure out, you know, the source of all of that. So it's complicated to say the least.
Okay. You might ask, why did it happen like this? Well, the basic answer is between the school board and the city, it was like brothers swapping around. They didn't bother to do the due diligence to get each parcel completed. They didn't think down the road about selling the property. So that's the reason it's so complicated. All right, appraisals are provided as dedicated on the assumption that the seller can convey clear marketable title. The City Commission funded a clear, funded a title search, an MAI opinion of title. The result of that you'd have seen in your booklet, in math form and in script. Okay. Now, please note that three-quarters of the property in question was given to the school district by the city or by individuals in the city. Those individuals being Philmon and Simpson-Harris. Do we have a layout of that?
It's the same.
No, we don't. Well, they're basically where the older school, the gymnasium, all the way to the center. That portion was given to the city, I mean, to the district by the city. All right. The result is a multitude of title impairments to the property make it impossible for the Putnam County School District to convey clear title to anyone other than to the city. No other buyers can contend with such complications. Only the city holds the key to clear title. The only apparent practical solution is for the school district to give the property to the city in a partnership arrangement that will benefit both the school and the city. And I do mean a partnership arrangement. And I'll talk about it later if you would like me to. You'll see that the first principle and the meares of the Blue Ribbon Committee is that the city entered into a binding agreement with the Putnam County School District for the acquisition of the property at little or no cost to the city. And number two, rehabilitate the school for adaptive use as a commercial, a community center without imposing financial burden on the city's taxpayers. The school district giving the city the property at little or no cost, that puts us at the end of step one. The city, showing its support for this project, has funded an ARPA, $120,000 historic resources study by R.E.G. Architects as a precursor to step two and step three. The last point of step one is the contract for the property at little or no cost to the city. The Blue Ribbon Committee will keep moving until the job is done, is completed. Now, I want to point out, the city of Pearson took a similar, but smaller property and received $1,200,000 in grants for their school's rehab. Brad Purcell, who is, and that is the school in Pearson, Brad Purcell, who is the father of the Better Place Plan, was a commissioner some years ago, county commissioner, was the point person on this project along with Gina Register. He has offered us his help. If they can do it, I know we can as well. Now, there are some other, there are some schools around the state that have been repurposed. Sarasota, Tarvin Springs, and you see the wines of Bill? Galacta Town Hall, Monmouth Park. Town Hall. Okay, if I turn my page. The city, the city will ask the state and many other sources for funding to rehab the buildings. I refer you to the executive review in your booklet. Of course, it's the Blue Ribbon Committee with it will do the legwork for the city. After the property is under contract, there will be a due diligence period of research for the rehabilitation operation phases that challenges. And the building solution to recommend to the City Commission. This is step two of our mission. We ask for your continued confidence as we move forward. We are certain we can do the job. We have before you a brief review of the prospect. We're going to ask Charlie Douglas to come up and explain the contract. Charlie, will you come up?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Douglas with the Douglas Law Firm, 117 North Second Street, Galactica, Florida. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Blue Ribbon Committee to present the summary of the Miller Middle School building contract. And this contract outlines the sale of commercial property located at 101 and 201 South Prospect Street in Crescent City, intended for multi-use governmental and community center purposes. The important key terms and conditions are the two parties being both governmental entities, the Putnam County School District and the city of Crescent City. The proposed purchase price and payment is $100. The closing details, the transaction will close on an agreed date with the buyer taking possession at that time, and the closing costs will be shared as is customary here in Putnam County, Florida. The property condition would be conveyed as is, and the seller would maintain the property, perform ordinary repairs, and keep insurance active until the closing date. As for title and survey, the seller would provide marketable title, and the buyer has the right to conduct surveys and inspection within a 180-day title examination period and an additional 180-day automatic inspection. For disclosures and legal terms, there includes a risk of loss, financing contingencies, and other regulatory compliance. For additional provisions at the end of the contract, no removal of essential equipment without buyer approval. The seller would ensure property security and prevent waste before closing. And the contract is subject to approval by the Putnam County School District and, of course, the Crescent City Commission. Next in line, as far as the purchase and sale agreement goes, would be a dialogue with the Putnam County School District. And we are here tonight to hear from the commission. What is your will? And this document in front of you is merely a beginning point of discussion and dialogue so that we can take it to the Putnam County School District to hear their response. If there are any additions or subtractions that you would like to see, we would want to hear from you this evening. And try to think of everything possible in the contract that's not already there that you would want to see there so that we can try to reduce the number of back and forths between these governmental entities. Try to establish the goalposts and take that with us to the Putnam County School District.
Okay. All right, thank you, Charlie. You're going to get a chance to ask Charlie questions in a few minutes, and you're going to get a chance to ask me questions. But at this point, I see that we have many people here, and I assume most of them are, or all of them are in support of this project. A few of them would like to speak. We also have, I have comments from Barbara Scholl. She is still under the weather, but she encourages the commission to support this project. Brad Purcell, I think, probably has sent something to the commissioners, and he is in support of the project, of course, of which we can. All right, I'm just going to be courageous. Everyone who's here in support of the project, would you please stand? That makes, that makes my heart warm. Do we have maybe a picture of the repurposed school? Can we put that up there? I'm going to ask several people to come and speak. And then there's others I'm sure they would like to say something. And then after that, I'm sure the commission will have questions. First, I would like Ms. Nancy Harris, if you would come. Now, she needs no introduction. She's a former mayor, former county commissioner. She's a former mayor, former county commissioner.
It is me. I walk a little slower, but I still talk kind of fast to let you tell you how I feel. I'm glad to see that this Blue Ribbon Committee was put together. In 1975, my then-husband, who is since deceased, said, "I was born in Crescent City. I was born in a house right in town. And every time we go near there, there's the house I was born in." And he says, "I want to raise my children in the town like I was." He said, "If I did something bad on my way home from school, my mom was waiting for me. Someone had already let her know." And we did raise Penn and Stephanie here. And I love this town, and it has done a lot for us. And I just want you to know how much I am supportive of this. I was on the commission when Barnett Bank made an offer to us. And they said, "We will sell the bank building, which we're in right now, and we will sell it to you at a very low price. We would like for you to use it as a city." So, we talked about it, and it wasn't 100% at the moment, but the more we talked about it, the more we realized this is a pretty good deal. It's from the corner here down to the next corner, includes all of that. And one of the things that persuaded a lot of us is that we could use that for more than city halls. We could use it for parking. The, at that time, the Pickensade Building had burned, and we had a terrible time with loss of business. We realized there's lots of things we had to do. We had a study gun on it, and we, we just realized that a lot of people, when the Pickensade wasn't there anymore, they'd go out of town. And when they're out of town, they'd go to Ace Hardware. They'd go to Leon's Apartment Store in Hiltons and stores that are not here anymore. And they didn't realize how much it hurt their own town. So one of the reasons that we wanted this was that we could have plumbing. Maybe we could rebuild our city and get it strong again. So, we thought, okay, we could have a city hall, and we could have all this other parking. And several things have been done better over the years. So, I really like the idea of saving the old school building. Not only does it have a lot of memories for a whole lot of people. We could move the city hall down there. We could, or not, just see what most people want to do. I'm sorry. Let me get my book. Okay. But the thought of the town center, of maybe missing our city hall down there, and, oh my goodness, recently, we had an eye-opener with this when the school board had the people that they donated property to had to move out of the building. And we started looking around to help them find a place. Lots of us were out there knocking on doors and saying, "Hey, what's available? Where could we put the historical society, our new blossoming group that everyone is really happy about?" We couldn't find a place. We, we were looking for something for the Christian Service Center down here. And we couldn't find any. And one of the reasons I was knocking on the doors is because they were knocking on ours. And that's where they are now in our perpetuating the old fellowship hall. And we're so grateful to be able to do that. We've had so many blessings because we were able to help feed the hungry and do things that we need to do in our community. So, that just kind of came to light. What do we have? Who can we welcome? How can we make our community a better place if we don't have any of them? A town center would be great. We could bring some of the things back that are gone, leave some of the ones we've got still there. And I love the auditorium. I look at it, and I think about my kids in the talent show where there's elementary school and how they grew from there and what went on. The plays that are there, they just warm my heart when I see them. And my goodness, the, well, where they play ball and the auditorium and the, anyway, all of those things were great, and they just brought back great memories. And if we could keep those, I, I see how they put a sheriff's office that's in that building down. I'm so glad to see them there and that all things can be used. The other thing that I think about a lot is when we go south, we go past the bill. You would too. We'd go past Pearson. And I'm always looking over at their schools that are no longer schools. And I think, what are they? We slow down, and we look, and I have seen things grow out of that. And they're making it wonderful. And this is just right down the street. And I know that they knew how to do that. They got help, they reached out. There's money out there. There are things that we don't know that we have to start digging and finding out what we can do. Why can't we do that? Why can't we have something better? And I have one thing in particular that I like and hope, I'm not on the Blue Ribbon Committee, so I don't know all the details. But I hope that the piece of property on the south end of this property that goes down to the water could be added to the Marquery Neil Sunset Park. We have a very exciting thing that a lot of people don't know about is this William Barcom Trail. And a lot of people have worked years to put that together. And the, there's a place with the sign on it right there at our boat dock. And this property joins the school property and join the city property. And that could be something very wonderful for us. So, I just want you to know that I would like to join those that stood up tonight and said, "Yes, let's try it. Let's see what we can do. Let's make our town a better place." Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. You're one of our heroes. All right, Judy West, would you come next? Judy is a recently retired city commissioner. I think we all know that.
Good evening, everyone. I have wanted this for a very long time. When I was on the commission, we were discussing this very same thing as been quite a while. The problem is money. And it was then also. I think that, or I believe that you can get grants to do some reconstruction as you need it. It won't be major. But I understand there's a $2 million grant you're going after, and that would be wonderful. And when all that is done, how are we going to afford a $180,000 electric bill every year? That's going to be on us, all right? I don't want to be a naysayer, but this is after everything is completed, then the commission is not out of money, and then citizens have to afford this. That's my only, well, it makes me nervous, all right? Where does that money come from after the grants are done and after it's just ours? Can we possibly get people to rent here and there that can pay for that? That's an if. I don't want to be the naysayer. I'm just saying, let's be realistic. Thank you. Thank you.
That is gonna be the job of the Blue Ribbon Committee. And we do have plans. All right. The next person I'm gonna call is, hmm, someone I'm very familiar with, our county commissioner, J.R. Nivoe.
Okay, J.R. Nivoe, 5660 Highway 17. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Thank you, City Council, Blue Ribbon Committee, School Board, thank you for being here. And in all the, it, it shows how much support there is in the community for the program. As a district one, county commissioner, I'd like to give my personal support to the, to the project. I've had discussions with county staff. There is a willingness on behalf of the county to work cooperatively with this project for both shared exterior and interior space. You know, I am one commissioner, but we've had preliminary discussions, and this is the type of county that's eager to get into partnerships with other entities in the county to further the vision. And the vision that the city has for Crescent City is very similar to the vision that we have for Putnam County. So, I think it's a great partnership. There will be support at the county level. And I just, I feel like a piece of it come together to overcome these challenges that will come to us. But this could be a great asset, just a channel and set up to be utilized by people from all parts of the county. So, thank you, and I, I urge you guys to work forward.